I would like to comment on a position that some citizens have taken.
Before you start, I'm sorry, can you give, just give the name of the record?
I'm sure Mark Pries.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment on a position that some citizens have taken concerning the pledge of allegiance to the beginning of the Haddon Board of Selectment Public Meeting. I summarize that position as I understand it as follows. As a public employee drawing a salary funded by taxpayers, a selectman is obligated to pledge allegiance to the flag as a stride in the United States Flag Code. First, the issue of the Flag Code. The code states that the pledge should be rendered by standing at attention facing the flag with the right hand over the heart. Numerous court rulings by the Supreme Court and federal district courts since 1923 have held the enforcement of this law as unconstitutional. In 1943, in the middle of the Second World War, the Supreme Court held that compelling students to recite the pledge at all violated the First Amendment's free speech right. The court ruled that "compulsory unification of opinion" was unlawful. The court said, "If there is any fixed start in our constitutional constellation, it is that no official, high or petty, can prescribe what shall be orthodox in politics, nationalism, religion, or other matters of opinion, or force citizens to confess by word or act or faith that are random." Subsequently, other federal courts have ruled that punishing students for sitting or even holding out a raised fist during the pledge are unconstitutional. Thus, kneeling during the pledge is the right of all citizens protected by the First Amendment. Second, the issue of whether a selectman paid by taxpayers has the right during official town business to kneel during the pledge. It is true that public employees do not have unlimited free speech rights. Speech or acts that disrupted the proper functioning of the public employee department, for example, instances of insubordination, would not be protected from speech. However, elected officials, such as selectmen, are not simply public employees. As several Supreme Court rulings have held, elected officials enjoy broad free speech rights. The Supreme Court ruling most pertinent to this situation is Bond versus Floyd, 1966. Julian Bond was elected to the Georgia Legislature, was prevented from joining the body because he had publicly opposed the war in Vietnam on cannabis services. He sued, like the situation here in Haddon, these positions concerned national policy. He sued, claiming that his free speech rights had been violated, and Supreme Court unanimously agreed. The court stated, "The manifest function of the First Amendment to represent a government requires that legislators be given the widest latitude to express their views on policy." The court further held that elected officials have a responsibility to take positions on controversial matters and to represent the people who elected them. In summary, a selectman has a constitutional guarantee right to kneel during the pledge of allegiance. They deserve the respect we would accord to all fellow citizens who are enjoying these rights.
Anyone else?
Yes, Flit Potter, North Branford, Connecticut. I think this law falls under respect. Sure, any court can rule on anything, and you can get away with anything in a courtroom. But it's just the respect to the flag that is... I'm offended. Did she kneel today? I couldn't look, I was respecting the flag. Did you kneel today?
Yes, I did, sir.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, because that offends me. Offends me deeply. Have you ever been in a war?
No, I fight every day for American citizens.
Well, I fought, and I got shot at. That's a little different.
I appreciate it, sir.
And when I got home, I was treated properly. And you've got so many freedoms here that you all take for granted. Until you leave this country's soil, and this is my personal opinion, it's not a court document, I respect elected officials. The town I come from, I respect all those elected officials, but they're not paid. They volunteer in North Branford, all our councilmen. You're paid, and you're supposed to represent, boom, the majority of your constituents. Now, if the majority of your constituents find this offensive, then are you representing them properly? I'm asking a question.
I don't know what the majority of constituents say now. I was elected.
Yeah, but if at least 51% of them don't agree with what you're doing, then I think you're offending them as well. I fought for your right of free speech, but not your lack of respect. When you lack, don't respect the flag, you're offending me deeply. So much that I'll travel from North Branford every chance I get into your office, because that's how bad you're offending me. I've never been this upset with anyone before in my life, until you started doing this. And you are offending so many people, but you don't realize it. I guess you just don't get it. So I ask you, I'll come hoping someday that you will stand. But I'm not going to look around and see if you are, because I'm properly rendering respect to that flag, and this country, and this town, and your elected officials. So until then, I guess we'll see a lot of each other. And you said, "Welcome to Haddon," last time you addressed me. It's a great town. It is, but until you get to these meetings, the great town is tainted because of your actions, because you're using company time to do a personal opinion. And that's the way I see it. The courts don't see it that way. Me as a person, I see it that way, and I have freedom of speech, you have freedom of speech. I respect the way I do my freedom of speech. I wait till it's a proper time. Even in my hometown, I know it's item 13A before I can speak up. I respect town politics, I respect town politicians, wherever they are, whatever town I'm in, and I respect procedures. And the pledge of allegiance is a procedure in your town charter for the meetings.
No, it's not.
It's on the agenda?
It's just on the agenda, it's not on the charter. Do you know why I kneel, sir?
Yeah, because President Trump has offended you by some of his actions.
Do you know how much he's offended the veterans? Do you know what he's done to the veterans?
He hasn't offended me, I'm in favor of him. Do you ever hear about, let me, I won't take, because I know there's a three-minute limit.
Well, I let him go here, so give me another couple minutes, and I gotta move.
Okay, because as a veteran, he's not interfering with his joint, he's a staff. He's getting, how much you hear about ISIS and stuff? He's getting the job done. So you can't go there. If you're not a veteran, you don't know what we think, so you can't make a statement for us. Thank you.
Sean Moriarty, I am a veteran, I've had battle in war, I'm not offended by this. I fought for your right to do this. I don't, you know, I don't agree with you doing it, but I fought for your right, and you can do it. And as for President Trump, no directed here, he has just announced he's going to get out of the INF Treaty, which is absolutely insane, that does nothing for this country, does not protect this country, does not honor this country. But anyway, I respect your right to do it, I fought for your right to do it, I was in a war, so you can do it. I don't agree with it, but you can do it. And as for the Flag Code, we are in violation of the Flag Code. Flag Code says in a public meeting, the flag should be in advance of the audience in a place of prominence. And it's in the back of the line.
Yes.
Chris Fish. I have a great deal of respect toward the United States and all the words that were said on paper that created the country, that we've never entirely lived up to, but we've generally been making a long, slow slide to live up to that. And I've always respected what's on paper. I think what's on paper is what sets us apart from everybody else. I don't personally respect what's happened in the government, it's happening ostensibly in my name, by objective. I do not respect the flag right now for what it stands for at this time.
You guys need to talk this way in that.
Sorry, there was a time when a lot of people used the phrase, "America, love or leave it." I want you to think about what was happening in government at that time.
Kelly, back with us. I'm not a personal veteran, I haven't fought in any wars, but I am, I lost a husband because it broke down our marriage after two very lengthy tours in Iraq. I've lost friends in Iraq. I've been to several, far too many. One is too many military heroes. Every veteran that I have spoke to may be a little bit offended and hurt by this five kneeling, but every single one of them respects her right to do so. They fight for the constitution of this country, not for the cloth. The cloth, I respect it, I still stand. I am saddened by where this country is and what has happened to this country and to this town, and how this is still an issue, and how blatant elected officials of this town are still blasting this. You're dividing this town, you're dividing this nation, and it needs to stop. Be adults, respect each other's opinions on something, and work together to get the damn job done. And that's my piece on this. And I am not offended by her kneeling, and I'm not offended by anyone standing, and I'm not offended by anyone's opinions.
Anyone else, before I move to town business? Yes.
I didn't write anything down.
We just have your name.
I'm Sandra Olsen, and I'm from Haddon, and I absolutely, I don't know, I've always thought that actually kneeling shows more respect than standing, personally. I mean, I don't see that that's an offensive thing, if she was doing cartwheels or talking or something, that was disrespectful. But kneeling is one of the highest forms of respect that one can offer. And she's agreed to the point that that's her choice, to show that level of respect, then I say thank you, Melissa. And I'm sorry for the division also.
Yes.
John Riker, W E I A A R T. Just very briefly to address the idea that all selectmen need to represent the opinion of the majority. There's a reason we have multiple members on our various public bodies, Board of Selectmen, our state legislature, Congress, and so forth. A big, you know, part of our system is that we also have people that represent minority views, and I think we need to bring them forward. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yep. All right, approved on the minutes of September 24.
Okay, there's a couple things on here. The word Potter Smith, Silver, spelled wrong. And Karen Blaschek's, Haddon is spelled, Haddon is spelled wrong, and she says disgusting, and it wasn't disgusting, it was, what was it, what was it, what did she say? She had something else down there, I don't remember what it was right now, but disgusting wasn't in there, it was, you remember what I was telling you earlier?
Despicable.
Despicable, instead of disgusting.
Any other comments?
The N, Capitulik is spelled incorrectly, under appointments. And I will again express my dismay that detail is not added to selectmen's discussions, but a comment from a member of, from a citizen from Haddon, using the word disgusting, is put into the minutes instead of an official conversation before a selectman.
Everything that we talk about is abbreviated, so.
It's skipped over almost every single time, as I've previously mentioned.
I don't really remember any discussion from the last time, but you can go back and listen to the tape. Any other comments? Any corrections made, all those in favor, signify to say aye. We have one real estate refund for $3,108.47. We have motor vehicle refunds for $2,600.73. For grand total of refunds for October 22, 2018, of $5,709.20. Motion to approve those returns.
Make that motion?
Any discussion on favor? Aye. Okay. We have a budget request that was approved at the Board of Selectment meeting in September for funds that were in the regional school district account that were not used to transfer over into unallocated capital nonrecurring for a total amount of $355,320. So we need to go to town meeting on this, but before we do, the board needs to approve it, and then we need to send it to town meeting. So I can have a motion to approve, to send to town meeting.
Make that motion?
Any discussion? On favor? Aye. Okay, we need to look at a date for town meeting, so we'll do it at the end of the month, or we'll do it the first week of November, but we can look at that. Okay, so Old County Road is one of the roads that is on the road report, obviously all the roads in town are. Old County had some significant damage that warranted almost emergency damage. The Board of Selectmen have the authority to approve money out of the bond fund. Two roads, Old County is, again, one of those that's in, one of the lower ratings. The drainage work was done that we did to the road, that was done by the town crew, but we need approximately $68,000 to take care of the paving for that. And with all the other road improvements that we've had to do, as everyone knows, because of all the excessive rain, and all the issues that we've had to do with materials, it makes sense to add Old County Road to the list, which the Board of Selectmen has the right to do. So I'd like to make a motion to designate bond funds to Old County Road Part 1. The estimated cost of Old County Road on the report was about $96,000, and again, due to the town crew being able to do the drainage work, we need approximately $68,000 to pave. So we can either make it 68 or round it to 70, because the cost of oil, you know, fluctuates every day in the cost, and if there's additional funds, we'll just roll it back over to do another road. So if I can have a motion.
When are we looking to do that?
Like, it's been already worked on in the drainage, and it's ready to go to paving. So, I mean, we can take it out of our other funds, but there's so many other roads that need work, it was just cleaner to just do it this way. So it's actually going to be finally paved, I think Wednesday or Thursday this week.
I think I'm happy.
Well, it's just been a mess.
Make that motion.
Any discussion? On favor? Aye. How much did you agree on? I'm sorry, your motion, 68 or 70?
I would do the 70, just because, because you're over a little bit, we don't want to come back, right?
Right. All right, so do an amended motion, $70,000. Okay. Any discussion? On favor? Aye. Okay. So we have some resignations. Bob McGarry, who was an alternate on the Board of Finance, has resigned. He was appointed as a full member due to the vacancy of Dave Capitulik at the last meeting. So he was sworn in, he resigned, and he's been sworn in for the Board of Finance. So I have his resignation as an alternate to serve on the Board of Finance. I also have a resignation from Chris Alexey, who is a full member of the Board of Finance, who has also put in his letter of resignation effective October 1st. And I have a resignation from our town planner, Liz Glidden, who has accepted a position with Verizon. She had told me that she was going to resign, and then kind of had a little bit of, not sure she wanted to pull the trigger, so she has decided to move on to Verizon. So I have a letter of resignation for her. So, not that we need to approve them, but just for the record.
When's her last day?
Liz's last day is Friday. She has agreed, however, to stay on and do the rest of the planning and resignations for the end of the year. There's only one more, there's only one for November because of the holiday, and there's only one, I believe, in December because of the holiday. So she's going to do that. All right, so appointments. I have a recommendation to fill, Bob McGarry's seat from Sam Crum, to fill that vacancy for Wayne Ruddy, right here this evening, to serve as an alternate on the Board of Finance. And then I also just received tonight a letter of recommendation from Melissa Schlag, who is the Democrat town chair, to appoint Sean Moriarty, who is also here tonight, to fill the full seat that Chris Alexey is vacating. So if I can have a motion to approve, or do Board of Finance as one, since they're both here. They're both here.
I make that motion.
Any discussion?
What's the motion?
That we accept both Sean.
Okay. So I think we should be specific, yeah, so Sean Moriarty to the full board seat, and then Wayne to the alternative.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. And then I have a request, I met with Courtney Swoka, she is interested in joining Economic Development, she is a Realtor in town, she's lived in the community for many years, she has children here, so she is asking to be appointed to the ADC Commission.
What is her affiliation?
What's her affiliation? Do you know?
I probably checked, but I don't remember.
I don't know.
As long as it's not too many of one.
No, I had Joanne check, I just don't remember. We have more views than we have mostly anything else, so I don't know.
But you don't know what she's, what her party is? We will conditionally approve her, and there's probably, I'll check if I get home.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So, while we're still kind of in that section of the agenda, I would like to formally, publicly ask to be on the hiring committee for a new town planner.
I'm not going to do that, Melissa, because it signifies it's a selectman meeting, so.
No, that's actually incorrect.
Well, I'm not going to put you on that board.
Thank you very much.
We can talk about that. We have new business for the salt bid, there were four bids that were brought in. Butler was the low bidder of $15.25. Rossin Materials was 1998. Driven Enterprises was 24.25. And G Madore Landscaping was 1946. The test results were sent out to the state lab to have tested, all of them did pass the sieve test, but the abrasion test is the next test. Unfortunately, all four of them received a grading of a D. It's not failing, that would be an F. So we have to look at the rankings, we went by price first, which Butler has the best price. The next best price was Madore, I believe.
Yeah.
Yep.
Rossin.
And then Rossin. When we look at the grading, we have a 78 for Butler, we have an 88 for Madore, and we have a 56 for Rossin. So Rossin actually has a better rating than Butler. But Rossin, and I think it's just because of the travel, where they need to come from, they are more than $4.50 than Butler is. So I think in talking to Chris Corso, the recommendation is to give Butler the bid. Is there any discussion on that?
This was a bid that we put in the newspaper, or the state contractors, or?
It was in the paper.
Did we check the state's bid?
The state bidder is Driven, because we use them for salt. But their bid is also high, because they're coming from such a faraway.
What was their price?
$24.25. They were almost nine, they were $9 higher.
That's Driven, is what you said on here, is the state?
Yeah, and they also are through the cog.
And did they put in a sample?
Yeah. Yeah, but they were one of the four. So they're on the state bid, which is why we went out.
And did we talk to other towns and try to buy more bulk nearest? We used to purchase with Killmore.
I don't believe on this bid we did that. We've been buying sand, I don't know, for years. I inherited buying sand from Madore, so that was in place when I took office.
Before that, yeah, we had just finished a split bid with Killmore. I'm just wondering if that's something that?
Yeah, no, I haven't done that, and I can, I don't know if Chris has, but we need to get some sand in, because they're running very low. But I can definitely have him address that, to see if we can get a better price from Butler. Butler's been more aggressive, if you remember, Butler has recently bid on the brush at the transfer station and everything else, so I think that they're just looking to be aggressive in their bidding right now.
I'll make a motion to approve Butler.
Any other discussion?
I'll say.
On favor? Okay. The next thing is the new date for our next meeting is scheduled November 12 at 6:30. And I don't know if you want to just move it to the next day, that Tuesday at 6:30?
The 13th?
Yeah, I mean, if we end up with something sooner, we can always move it, because it'll be a special meeting, but I want to, Joanne fix, you know, put it on the calendar and put it out there, so people know.
Can we do a combo town meeting, Board of Selectment meeting, same night?
Probably could.
Let's see, yeah, 13th is fine for me.
Work for you, Larry?
Yeah, it works.
Is that enough time?
Be at the firehouse?
I don't know, I gotta look at the timing of how things are going to be printed, but I think if we get the ad in, the ad will come out on November 1st, and then, yeah, that's plenty of time.
You don't have to be at the firehouse?
Yeah, so we could do a town meeting at, or Board of Selectmen at 6, or vice versa, whatever, do one at 6, and one at 6:30. But does November 13 work for me? Okay, all right, I'll just do that. All right, and then under old business, there's a bid up on the town website for contractor for Tylerville Water. The bid specs are available, Connecticut Water is working with us on that. There's a mandatory pre-bid meeting here on October 29th for those contractors that are going to be bidding on the water. All final bids are due in November 15. November 15, so at the November 22 Board of Selectment meeting, whatever that Monday meeting is before Thanksgiving. Hopefully, we'll have a decision, depending upon the number of contractors, again, the process of going through all the bids, and making sure everything is in line, and the bid specs are all met, we may or may not, and then that would bring us to the first meeting in December, to try to get them on their way. The goal is to start to dig in January and start working on Little Meadow, because that area gets so muddy in the spring. And then also, then when the spring comes, start working at the Chester Line and have the two areas unite and meet together. So, just so everyone's aware, that that bid has been posted, it is available on the town website, and it is up there, so that's it. All right, and then under old business, there's a bid up on the town website for contractor for Tylerville Water. The bid specs are available, Connecticut Water is working with us on that. There's a mandatory pre-bid meeting here on October 29th for those contractors that are going to be bidding on the water. All final bids are due in November 15th. November 15th, so at the November 22nd Board of Selectment meeting, whatever that Monday meeting is before Thanksgiving. Hopefully, we'll have a decision, depending upon the number of contractors. Again, the process of going through all the bids and making sure everything is in line and the bid specs are all met, we may or may not. And then that would bring us to the first meeting in December to try to get them on their way. The goal is to start to dig in January and start working on Little Meadow, because that area gets so muddy in the spring. And then also, then when the spring comes, start working at the Chester Line and have the two areas unite and meet together. So, just so everyone's aware, that that bid has been posted. It is available on the town website, and it is up there. So, that's the only update on that that I have. Ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor? Aye.